It's called this regular meeting of city council to order February 2nd, 2021 here at the Stafford County Annex. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening? Okay. Citizens comments, Mr. Doran.
I think most of you probably know that Ottabun, Kansas filed suit in attempt to disrupt the settlement that was made between the state of Kansas Division of Water and the Refuge and the Department of Interior and Department of Wildlife. Want you to be aware of it, that John knows, Jamie knows. Talk to your compatriots at the county, other cities, and ever, and see what you need to do or can do to join them. It will affect banks and everybody's balance sheets if they would happen prevail. I have had people tell me that they question whether they have standing, but that's going to be a legal argument. I'm not certain what position Ground Water Management or GMD5 is taking. I've heard that they are asking to become part of the suit because they were conveniently left out of that suit, but that's for people like John to decide and the judges. But be aware, join forces with the other forms of government and amicus brief for whatever you need to do to become part of this because it will affect, as we talked before a year ago, it will affect all of the cities, the school, and everyone involved, and the banks. If Ottabun has standing, maybe everybody here has standing. So that's all I have to say. Thank you, John. John can tell you more than I can. He's read it. Or I read it, but I don't know. I don't know anything about law. So I'll see you all later.
Great, thank you. Okay, consent agenda. Approval minutes of regular council meeting, January 19th, 2021. You gonna get a motion?
So move second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance, 1231, 2020, in the amount of $4,001.86.
So move second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance, 0202, 2021, in the amount of $110,356.73.
So move second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. And appropriate ordinance with petty cash in the amount of $226.
So move second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to department heads. Electrical department, Jeff.
I don't really have anything. We're just on fix and repair. So we're working on some stuff in the plant. We did some outside stuff, some meter problems that we've had here and there. And when the weather permits and the weather's dry enough, we can get in the bottom of the ditches. We're still working on that line west of town, but we've had a little rain, and so it's kind of cut us back for a little while. And ran into a little problem a week ago setting an anchor and went in through a six-inch water line that we didn't know was there. So we spent today repairing it. But, you know, other than that, why, we're just keeping stuff together. That's what we're doing.
Okay, good. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jeff? Okay, moving on, water department. Jason.
Well, not much on the water. I've got some stuff on the sewer. Jamie was gonna take care of that here soon. But other than that, just changing some, fixing the WL and then changing setters when we can, something like that.
All right. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jason?
Where are we at with the pool leak over there? It's a minor deal right now, but what are we gonna do about the pool that leaked from last year?
Well, we're just gonna, when we cross, when we get to that, we're just gonna go in and have to jackhammer that out and then dig down in the sand and fix that part of it.
I'm praying now so we don't, we're not rushing it and we forget about it before the season, you know?
Right.
So.
Warren Brothers.
Yeah, but the leak, I think, that you're talking about, like where it was losing a lot, yeah, that ended up, remember, like we had kept an eye on it and it wasn't?
Well, yeah, I thought it was, I didn't know if it was that one over there on the side where we were or not. And then that, and then that valve.
Whatever you got shoved in there came out or something last year. And they were losing a lot of water and it was a big concern, was it not, in my last year?
Yeah, it had been taken care of.
Yeah.
Is it just recoding it? Is what we were looking at last year?
We were trying to fix, yeah, it was recoding and everything, but.
Not upgrading, I guess, but just doing some TLC projects and getting it more maintainable.
Maybe the intermediate pool, maybe was the issue last year.
Yeah, they have to have. We ended up waiting, like it was just, it was already filled up with water and they're like, not even sure about it.
I know what you're talking about, and it was, we were concerned that we were losing a lot of water and then we kept an eye on it and.
Yeah, that, yeah, that part of it, yes, I remember that, but then we, then it wasn't every.
Yeah.
Yes. And then she brought up a part about the slide and we were trying to figure that one out. And oh, boy, on that one. So.
No, just, it's when our timer went out.
Right.
Yeah, I will, on old business, I will get that. I'll get, I'll call. I don't remember his first name. I'll have to go back and look for Warren Brothers.
There's a receipt bid there, so you guys on that, the pool.
Well, I was waiting for Warren Brothers to come and check it out, so.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or concerns for Jason in the water department? Okay, moving on, street park department.
Filling holes, grading, and just stuff like that, filling those cracks. I'm keeping the guys after that one. I'd like to get that done.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns under the street park department? All right, moving on. Police chief, Chief Adams.
Okay, chief, I had a question for you. Do we have any idea what happened with the mailbox behind the postal, post office?
Yeah, they, well, there was an accident back there. The delivery truck that delivers the mail struck the mailbox and then they just took it out now. So I guess, I don't know if they're replacing it or what, but.
They got to do it there.
Okay, so that's why it's not back there anymore.
Okay.
But it was the delivery person bringing the mail in in the morning or something that struck it and, and tore it up. So they took it out, but I didn't know if they were putting a new one in.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Chief Adams? Okay, moving on, fire chief, Chief Sanders.
I don't have any.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Chief Adams? Excuse me, Chief Sanders. Okay, moving on, city administrator, Jamie.
I don't have a question.
Do you have anything? Yeah, I have a question. Do we have any issues with the website domain?
Um, so I'm working, I told Ashley that we were ready to get everything going and she said we had to transfer the website domain. So then I got ahold of the people that are in charge of the website now. They ended up emailing me Ron Culbert's name and saying that he was gonna get a series of emails. So I called him this morning to just kind of talk to him and warn him and just remind him that this might be happening so we can get it changed without incident. And he hadn't got anything yet. He said he thought he transferred the domain back in 2012, and I did find emails about it, but I'm not sure what happened back then. So I'm hoping everything goes smoothly and it's not, or it's not, I don't know. I don't know where it would've gone.
Okay, yeah, I was under the impression it had been transferred over to the city, so.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, all right, good. All right. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jamie? Moving on, city attorney, John.
I don't have anything.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for John? Okay, moving to old business. I assume that we all want to talk about the engine for the power plant?
Can we go up to the sewer report real quick first? I have printed out for you guys. I went through, Pam had gone through the videos and kind of highlighted the, the spots with defects. The first, the loose page that you have just kind of shows you an overall breakdown of, like their numbering and letter system. And then I'm gonna apologize for the, I mean, I just honestly put the pictures on there so you could see. I didn't try to make it pretty or anything. If you guys would like a copy of the PowerPoint, I'll be more than happy to email it to you or you guys can come by and, and check out on my computer. I just wanted to show you that these pictures are three and a buck, so your threes, your fours, and your fives. I left out the ones from the twos just because those are the kind of the minor, the minor ones. But, I mean, I don't really have much more knowledge or understanding of it than, than that. I mean, obviously, there are places where there's some issues. I also have Jason and the guys, I printed out, I think, five different locations throughout the camera area of actual residence tap-ins where it is obscured, like they have roots growing in right at that tap-in. So I have them trying to measure out according to the cameras and find the property owners so they can take care of that issue since, since we did get it camered and we can hopefully help them fix, fix the problem before it gets worse. It, it would be kind of like on the second page down at the bottom, there's roots medium lateral on that. So that's basically what I was finding on, on people's tap-ins, like on their personal, going into their, going into their, their personal sewer line, right at that, with the main line. So they are working on that just to try to help out those, those five houses there as well. So that's just kind of for your information. Definitely ask questions if you have them and I will do my best to find the answers.
We've been discussing it for a while, haven't we? Like Jeff, was it, you mentioned there was some lining that we were, that's like the option as far as fixing all these?
So Jason actually.
Jason's more in touch with that than I am now, but yeah, we talked about it before.
Looking at pictures here, and it looks like a big deal. Do you have a plan or anything? What we can afford.
What I've got, I called KDHE, got some info from them. I picked three of the closest people or businesses that do this. So I went through those films, looked at, and then I picked, I picked more of the, when you're looking at the sewer main, I picked more than when there was three threes on there or four and fives is the ones I gave them. And then I gave them the ones under the structures too, because those worry me, they just do. And that's why I told him, I told him to itemize it from the ones under the building and then the ones that are not under the building that I put for three, fours, and fives. And I got three of them. One just sent it in today. I seen it at four o'clock this afternoon, so I'm gonna send it to her. And then when the others come in, we'll send it to them. And then that way, when you guys see the figures of it and how they do this, and what the, one of the guys come down from Denver, from somewhere in Colorado, and he sat there and told me, I was, they do this, it's just like putting a pipe into another pipe and you won't have no more, it's over a 50-year term, but this thing will last. And it's, and that would just, it just got peace of mind as more of, because I just, I just have a picture in my mind of what could actually happen and what could cost, and then KDHE coming down on us and stuff like that. That's what I'm worried about. And if we could get this going and get, and then see if we can't get some of these lined, it'd sure give you peace of mind.
So yes, moving forward, the three bids are being obtained and then we will come with the bids. But I wanted you guys to be able to see the pictures and ask the questions.
They did pretty good. The camera, they used this really good camera.
On these pictures, Jason, they've got like a foot marking, is that, I'm assuming that's where this is located in that running pipe, like 68.
Yes, from that, from the manholes that they went through, from the books that the city had forever, they took that manhole and they started, when they dropped that down and they started taking off is when they started counting it. And then that tells you where every one, every tap, every crack, everything is, yeah.
The scale was a whole lot better than the picture.
How do you, how do you know if they're going north or south or?
Just wait, just look from the manholes, which way we know. Like the one manhole saved, whatever, 162, and then it'll go to 163 or four, whatever it is. Well, we know from our map that they're going that way. Plus, from what, from when they show it on there, they'll show a little circle where the manhole is, another one down here, and they show a line, and then they'll put the footings with a cap going like this or whatever. Yeah, it's really, it's pretty neat.
We have a book that we follow that's been laid out for years.
And then they'll put a little arrow like this where the flow goes, and then they'll have another one where the flow is.
Right out of the top, like on that first page, it's 43 to 44, like those two numbers at the top. But that shows the starting manhole to the end manhole.
Got you, yeah. Got you.
That gentleman that showed up here from there and was looking around, we took him down to Davis's and took him in there. He wanted to see that one in the building. And we went and showed that one. Then he was telling me how he was gonna do that one with all the, the, what do you, the turbidilies or whatever in that one pipe, the cast iron pipe underneath the school. And he was sitting in the barnacles or whatever, that he said that they'll go in there with a machine and just thrash that, get that stuff off of there, clean it real good, and then they start filling it.
Yeah, they'll go down and scour it where it's clean enough, it's just shying before they ever do it.
And then he showed me a little thing on there. I went and seen the little video he showed me. And what they do is they have this little robot that they, after they, after they line it, they mark every, they take it down and measure each one, and they have this little robot that goes down there and starts cutting the tap-ins. It's the darnedest thing. It's really neat.
I just, I think it is important.
It is compared to an excavator. It's a whole lot cheaper than an excavator.
Any more discussion on that?
Have all those by next meeting then, okay?
We're hoping so, yes.
I would think that PowerPoint, are the pictures bigger on the Simmons?
Yeah.
If you want to send them to PowerPoint, I'd appreciate it.
You know me and paper. I almost gave you guys one slide per page, but.
If you want to send it, it'd be hard to go through.
And I can send it to everyone.
I like to look through the list.
Yeah. Can you open PowerPoints on your phone? You can?
I'll look at it on the computer so I have bigger screen.
Yeah.
Okay, what's the next item, Jamie?
PowerPoint. Larry's here. I put the resolutions in their packet.
Okay. Did they send out two or?
They shouldn't have it.
Okay, I'll just talk from a handout here that I think you may already have, a script, page numbers on it, yeah, fellow team, page numbers at the top right there. I'm Larry Kleeman of Ranson Financial. We're a municipal advisor, financial advisor, helping local governments run Kansas, borrow money, buy share municipal bonds, and help and look for loans and grants, and also do your city code, I think, too. So I'm talking to Jamie, and I think I talked to you guys last month, too, over the phone with the, you're looking at the power plant, looking to finance that. And so I can walk you through briefly here the process of issuing municipal bonds. Usually it's a two, two-meeting process, tonight and then one month later. Tonight, we'll just go over the numbers and the process, and then next month, we'll bring back bids on bonds from various end writers. You can take the lowest and best bid, lowest interest rate. Let's see, click from the page two, has just kind of a sample estimating debt service schedule. Again, we take bids, we come back here next month, and then you can have, accept the best bid, and then it will be locked in. And so these interest rates on page two are a little conservative. In fact, we just had a bond sale yesterday for C S of Blatt in southwest Kansas. And instead of interest rates ranging from 1.5 up to 2.4 like I have here over 10 years, their interest rates were 0.2 up to 1% in year 10. So lots of folks are really hungry for bonds nowadays, and so we've had some really good sales. Three months ago, Geneseo, we tried to sell bonds for them, and they, it was refunding, so we needed a sort of low interest rate and they couldn't make it there. They were, it was a smaller issue, maybe 300,000. So normally a million or more, you get a lot of bites on it. 720, I think, will do well. Maybe not as well as the 1.6 million of Sublet last night, but still, I think, I think the rates would be lower than what I have here on page two. And we could, again, schedule this bond over 10 years, I think, is kind of the consensus. And we would schedule, so the first payment wouldn't be until 2022, so you can start planning the budget for the first payment this summer for your, when you budget for next year in 2022. Page three, just kind of shows the sources and uses of funds. I think the latest number I have here on page three is 675,500 that you need for your project costs for the power plant. And then, of course, to issue bonds, there's various cost of issuance. The 18933, which is summarized at the bottom half of this page, includes our fee as financial advisor, bond counsel, usually Gilmore Bell is the lead bond attorney around the state, and then there are a few other fees, state treasurer, attorney general, they have a few fees in there. And up there, under uses of funds, underwriter discount, have in there 2%, 14,000. That's something used to attract bidders. Oftentimes, it's gonna be much less than that and will downsize the bond as necessary on the day of sale. Pages four and five, these are the resolutions you can consider tonight, it's four and six. Page four actually authorizes you to issue geo-bonds, general obligation bonds for this power plant, just kind of authority to issue the bonds. And then page six is what we call a cell resolution. That authorizes us to, as consultants, to work on your behalf, as the finance advisor, bond counsel, working city staff, to put together the bid documents. And then in a couple weeks, we'll issue the, we'll send out the bid packets, come back here in a month, next month for the bond sale. We'll present the bid tabulation. You can approve the best bid at that time. I think that's about it. The first page there, that has the calendar. So March 2nd, I believe, is your first March meeting. So we would plan to have bids due at our office at 11:00 a.m. We'd then, after that, prepare the bid tab, come back here with all the finalised documents that evening, and you can approve the best bid. Any questions on the process, numbers, anything? Otherwise, there's just the two resolutions you can approve tonight to authorize us to move forward.
Do you have numbers for me? Or was it something that I haven't seen?
Yeah, I'm here.
I'd make a motion to pass resolution number 2021-02, authorizing and providing for the acquisition installation of equipment for the city power plant.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
And I'd make a motion to pass resolution number 2021-03, resolution authorizing the office itself, general obligation bond, series 2021, in the city of St. John, Kansas.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
All right, guys, we'll be in touch.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, is there anything else on old business that we would like to discuss this evening?
Did you ever hear any updates on the two properties on the code violation after our last?
No, they know about it.
Chad was supposed to be doing that dirt work pretty quickly, wasn't he?
They started on.
Sergeant?
I put it in my, in the report.
I don't know, Biden, they look like they got the groundwork. It looks kind of muddy out there right now, so.
Um, do you guys want to keep strategic plan on the old business or can we remove that?
Just take it home, my opinion.
I mean, I feel like we've been getting pretty good maintenance schedules in place, but actually doing a strategic plan doesn't seem like it's gonna happen in the near future. It's definitely something we could maybe come back to, but like Ross has said, we can't run before we walk or crawl or whatever stage we're at.
We're doing pretty good if we can get that sewer project, estimates under control on this power plant. That's, that's pretty catastrophic.
Yeah.
Water tower, sewer, power plant.
I mean, weather hits that.
Yeah, what else are you gonna do? You know what I mean?
We're addressing some pretty serious issues, I think. We're doing pretty good.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. And I think Allen has the officers getting house numbers for us. The guys are still working on inventory. I got the office inventory submitted this year, so.
So we're, the pedestals for the truck parking, is that something we need to order? I think that's gonna take forever to get.
I'm gonna guess it's gonna take a little while to get them, Ryan. I think you're probably right, because I don't know how much trouble you've had getting material.
Yeah.
You know, I, I was telling Jason before we come in, I've been waiting on this filter rack for that engine, you know? And the salesman called me this evening, and the last two have been kicked out of the factory before he got ahold of them, even though his order was in there. And he said, I think I've got yours found and I think I gotta go to Alva and pick it up in the morning and deliver it to you. So, you know, it, it's just how far you want to go. But I, I'd say we're gonna have to have some lead time there because we're gonna have to get them, you know? We're gonna have to get them plumbed up at least before, you know, I don't know that we actually have to have the pedestals as long as we have the wiring stuff in place before we do any drastic work as far as any concrete work under the base of it or anything there, you know? Because, because it can be formed around it or whatever the case might be, but it would be nicer to have them here at the time, yes, it would.
Yeah. I sure would like to have them on, on hand so we make sure that.
Well, we know we got the right stuff, the right size, you know, because if something's wrong, we gotta have time to be able to cover ourselves and go back, so.
Right. I mean, the wire should be easily accessible.
Oh, yeah, the wire, we haven't made any trouble getting the wire at all. No, the wire's been easy to get, so.
Did we talk about doing all?
I have all of the wire bids from St. John.
It is like everything else. I mean, you know, it's gonna climb, it's, I mean, the stuff's been going up, cost of copper's going up and that, so.
We talked about doing every single one of the pedestals that we're talking about, putting in right now? Yeah. I think what we.
For 105 foot, right?
What we were discussing, I think we were gonna run all the line and put all the pedestals in, but we were gonna start with the rock on the south side and work more as we could. I think was the last time we discussed was bring them in on the west side and leave everything parked at the south. And, you know, if we could only do half of it in rock, at least all of our stuff was out there, but, you know, if we just had to do.
But where are the pedestals? Were they gonna sit? Aren't they gonna sit on the concrete? That's why.
No, no. The concrete was only a certain amount, like 105 feet or whatever, just for the landing, if they wanted to dolly down the trailer.
So the pedestals will just be out in the rock?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Those would just be right down the middle. You could pour a little pad around it, but. Yeah, I don't. I would just go ahead and get all the pedestals. I would get all the pedestals and. I mean, what if they.
Well, if they run in and they got a base in them, you know, where a guy could get them plumbed in and get tamped around them, why, I think, you know, I don't think it hurt anything to have them. I really don't.
Jason, you still have that information?
I don't, I don't have it.
Yeah, I don't think it's hard to, it's an excellent idea. So, yeah, maybe get them plugged.
And then Jeff, on my notes here, um, you had said at one time that the transformer for this project is gonna be eight weeks out, so we probably need to get that ordered too.
The what?
You had said the transformer for this project is gonna be eight weeks out.
It depends on the truck, but yeah, I mean, I can call him anytime and it'll come the next time through. Yeah, I can order it, sure.
Does it have the culverts? Jason picked up the culverts on his way back.
I would, I would say we probably need to get the transformer and the pedestal over.
Yeah.
Bigger size than I put down there.
See, Chad just done, that's basically next step. Get the wiring there.
Get the wiring. Seventy-five, wasn't that big?
And I would imagine-
Fifty? Fifty?
I just have to reassemble it.
Sure. If there weren't-
I slept since then, I'm gonna have to think about this.
I have nine hundred and forty-five dollars next to it.
Well, that's about all they got done.
I'll go back through my phone and I'll see if I can find it. When did we do that? Six months ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're running about it in three weeks, so it's, it's not a, you know, it's not like I can't find it, I'll just have to do some digging because I, I've slept since then.
Okay, is there any more discussion on that topic?
Do we need to make a motion for them to buy them? I don't do-
Probably a good idea.
What about the, trying to think, the light poles?
You had light poles, didn't you, Jeff?
We've got light poles.
Think about doing the wood?
It depends, you know, with it being in rock, I don't feel so bad about putting these poles in. If we were gonna do something that was gonna be more permanent than that, I probably would put new stuff in. But we have some that been on the rack quite a long time. You know, they're just sitting there. I mean, we just won't use them, they might last thirty years, they might not, but they're forty-fives and fifties. We can get them up in the air when we get some light up there where you can see. And they're not gonna be used for anything else, so we won't put them on a power line. So they've been here since, I don't know, quite a long time.
Pedestals, where we put them?
Six.
Thirteen.
Twelve or thirteen, what?
We have thirteen.
We need to put one down on the south end for pickup parking or truck parking, vehicle parking, did we? So we can plug diesels in.
Pickup parking thirteen with just the trucks.
But we were just gonna put a box on the south end and some plugins, I think, some short plugins for, for diesel trucks, pickups? Yeah. So you say thirteen? Okay.
Yeah, yep.
I'll get ahold of Greg, he'll find it faster than I will. I'll just call him first.
I'll double check my numbers just in case things have gone up since October. I know I talked to Greg at the end of the year, but I'll, I'll get ahold of him tomorrow and double check. And then we can um, approve the invoices at the next month.
Do we need to make a motion to bid?
I'll get better than that.
Or just, you guys just give them coming?
I mean, you can just give us permission to order and then we can, I mean, we're gonna have to approve by invoice anyways.
Well, we know it's coming, it's not like you don't know.
Just approve thirteen pedestals.
Yeah.
And the transformer?
Yeah, transformer's under my spending limit, it's not a big deal.
Culverts we're under, it's gonna be the pedestals and the lights and the wire that's gonna be over spending.
I'd maybe hold off on the lights for right now, those are pretty readily available. I'd make a motion to approve Jeff buying thirteen pedestals for the truck parking lot.
Second.
We have a motion on a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, is there anything else we'd like to discuss on old business?
Well, we're talking about that. John, do we have a, something in place for whom we get the truck parking up and going?
I don't remember. The only thing I can remember doing is the truck route.
The truck route, I don't think-
That's probably something we oughta, maybe get him started on.
Why did I think we thought we were gonna use the truck route as a base resolution and then just critique it on some way or something?
Yeah.
We've had that, we've had that, I think so. I thought so, yeah, right.
We'll look into it.
But I, I mean, we probably-
We've got one from another city or something. We've got, we've got something on that.
I'll look into it and put that with my update for the week.
Because in three months, we're gonna have to be thinking about that anyway to be able to enforce it.
Yeah, yeah.
Or from the police department to enforce truck parking.
And I still think we should give everybody a grace period just to be sure.
Yeah, I think you give them a certain time that it goes into effect for them to figure it out or start using it.
Yep. Any more discussion? Anything else under old business? Okay, do we have, we don't have any new business? We have no executive sessions? Having said that, I entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion on second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.